It's seven o'clock and we have a quorum here, so I'm going to call the public session to order. We were just in executive session to discuss some collective bargaining negotiations with regard to employee health care plans. And so, we're back in public session and the first item on our agenda is always is citizens' concerns. If there's anybody who wants to raise an issue briefly, succinctly, about something that is not on the agenda, please come to the mic.
I will be brief and succinct. I'm Bob Sekulow from Parkland Lane in Acton. I want to follow up on last week's Board of Selectmen's meeting. I could not attend, but I did watch it on TV. Two quick points. First, I was very glad to see acknowledgement of the huge gap between what the Department of Environmental Protection now considers the safe yield of Nagog Pond and what Concord intends to draw from the pond. As you know, the safe yield is the average daily draw that the pond can sustain without going entirely dry in a particularly severe drought. Our area is so-called drought of record. For Concord to draw 1.5 million gallons per day when the safe yield is only about half that value is, in my view, downright reckless and shows selfish lack of concern for one of the Commonwealth's most beautiful ponds. Second, your conversation with State Senator Eldridge discussed the value of establishing a citizens' committee to work with Jamie Senator Eldridge's staff on legislative amendments to the Act of 1884. That legislative amendment presumably would guarantee Acton's future rights to water at Nagog Pond. Needless to say, I and others were greatly heartened by that excellent suggestion. In my view, the time to establish such a committee is now before too much more time passes and before any final decision is made on Concord's appeal. Having said that, I can recommend one town resident who has both environmental and legislative experience and who would be excellent for this important committee, perfect for this important committee, and that's Carolyn Keely. Carolyn could not be here tonight, but she was alerted to the fact that I planned to make this suggestion and has agreed that if you believe that she would be a valuable member of the committee, she would agree to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' concerns? Okay. Next item is the chairman's update. There was a reception honoring town volunteers last Friday, May 12, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Narra Picnic Pavilion. It was a little bit cool, but there was an enthusiastic gathering of about, I would guess, 30 volunteers for lively conversation and gnashing. Ms. Green, Ms. Gardner, and event organizer, Mr. Berry, were also present. And on behalf of the selectmen in the town, Mr. Berry presented a gift to former member Franny Osman in recognition of and thanks for her service. The Discovery Museum groundbreaking reception is this week, and I assume that any interested selectmen have responded to the invitation that we received a while back. The ABRHS graduation invitation went out to selectmen, I think in our packets. Please respond to Debbie Trench at AB by this Friday, May 19. My husband and I, who have gone every year since I joined the board in 2010, will have to miss the event for the first time because his college reunion is at the same time and he's on the reunion planning committee, so we kind of have to go. And even though we aren't AB parents, never have been, we always enjoy being there. And Jim likes to listen to the band because he played trumpet when he was in high school. The World Film Series sponsored by the Acton Bosso Cultural Council concludes this Friday, May 19, at 7:00, this room. The film is "Ansondi," which is anglicized to "incendis," but it translates literally as fires or less literally and more poetically as scorched, directed by a French-Canadian filmmaker. It's a suspense film, and it's about two fraternal twins who, after their mother's death, travel to Quebec, from Quebec to their mother's homeland in a country that strongly resembles Lebanon. The Middle East scenes were filmed in Jordan, and they make some surprising discoveries about their mother, the father, and brother they never knew. Some sad news, which the board already is aware of, Danny Factor, who is a longtime Commission on Disabilities member, lost his wife, Nadia Franciscano, to cancer yesterday. The family is sitting shiva this week. The memorial service is planned for June 11 in Newton. Our heartfelt condolences to Danny, their son, and other family members. And the future meetings are at the end of our agenda. We will continue at our next meeting our discussion of the Town Manager's annual performance evaluation with an executive session presumably to discuss the contract and proposed changes, and if we reach consensus, we will go into open session to basically vote to approve, formally approve, the contract. There is a site plan about the Acton Ford property that is actually my assignment. There will be Narra Master Plan presentation, and finally, the Water Resources Advisory Committee overhaul charge, which is my project, and presumably will be subject to discussion at our next meeting. So, Mr. Manager, that's it for me.
I don't have a report because I didn't think we were doing them tonight.
All right. Well, we are next, our public hearing, our resumption of Insulet doesn't start until 7:10, and we have nothing on the consent agenda. Well...
What's that on my year?
Hmm?
Seven.
Seven. What?
The agenda says 7:00 for Insulet so we can go, I guess.
What says 7:10 on my thing?
Yeah?
Yeah. Oh, well, yeah, I have, this agenda says 7:10, and, well, I'll just read the notice. And it said, because the notice says 7:00, which may or may not be correct, but, yeah, I have an agenda that says 7, yeah, it says 7:10. Anyhow, by the time I finish this notice, which is long, maybe it'll be closer to 7:10. "The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on May 15, 2017, at 7:00 PM, continued from April 24, 2017, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of Insulet Corporation, a Delaware corporation, care of John A. Narcom, Vice President, U.S. Manufacturing, for a site plan special permit 3/17/17-464 under zoning bylaw section 10.4 and for special permits under 6.7.9 and 6.2.3 at 100 Nagog Park, Acton. The applicant proposes to expand and renovate the existing building and parking lot and gain relief from parking regulations. The application and accompanying plans can be inspected at the Planning Department in Town Hall during normal business hours." And I see we have a contingent here representing Insulet. Perhaps you could, if you want to sit at the tables here to talk, you're free to, or you can continue to talk at the stand, but I don't know how we want to proceed. We continue this in part because we were going to have a full board tonight. Mr. Berry is back from holiday, so, and he has caught up by reviewing the video of our last meeting when we discussed this project, so he's up to speed and able to participate in not only the discussion, but the decision. So, I'm just wondering whether there is something, if there's something new that we need to hear from the proponents about before we resume our discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Town Manager. Wayne Bellick, Waterman Design, joined tonight by Chris Sladd, CI Design, John Narcom and John Bowden from Insulet, Jim Elmonte from our firm, Alex Para, local council, and Kirsten Digan from CI Design. Sorry, Kirsten. There's Kristen, Kirsten, Christine, there's a lot of them that I've been dealing with lately. But to answer your question, Madam Chair, first of all, thanks for having us again. Minor changes to the plan, and just in response to some comments that were raised at the last meeting. Basically, what we're looking at, you folks may recall that up in the, I don't know if this thing's not projecting, okay, so up at the loading dock at the north end of the site, there was a question about the fence between that area and the Avalon community. We have met with Roland and his staff, and what we've decided to do is extend the retaining wall in that area so that it complies with the local zoning and its parapet wall located in that area. And again, that is located up in this area here. In addition to that, we've added some additional screening along this area and here, and we've also added some mechanical units in this location here for the purposes of cooling the air conditioning units in the facility. There were some questions raised from an abutter in this location about screening along the parking area and nighttime lighting, and the concern was vehicles in that area shutting light down into her property. So, we had decided to look at one of two options in this area, and they're detailed in the draft board's decision. One was a series of, I believe, cedars in here, Jim, or those cedars in this location here, and a combination of evergreen and deciduous plantings in that location. In addition to that, in meeting with the town planner and his staff, he had asked if we could expand the flexible parking areas and bring more of the existing areas into compliance with those provisions. So, what we had done is, in this area here, added some vegetation likewise through here, in here, in this area as well. So, that was basically it in terms of responding to comments that were raised at the last meeting.
Any questions, comments from the board? Ching Sun?
So, yeah, I guess I just wanted to confirm, when you were talking about at the top end, near the second loading dock, when you say extend the retaining wall, does that mean the eight-foot-high structure on top of the wall, you're going up to that max eight-foot height where the fence is?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, in lieu of the fence, Madam Chair, we've eliminated that fence in that area and have just extended the wall. So, it's basically a freestanding wall for about four feet, and then the four feet below is actually retaining.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that that was the case.
Thank you.
And then I guess the other concern that was raised sort of by citizens, yeah, last time was related to truck delivery times. And so, I wanted to, I guess this is more of a question for Insulet, just for personal edification-related reasons. The reason that you stated last time was that you wanted to bring in your materials at, sort of before your first shift started, which is why, or around the time of the start of your first shift, is that correct? Sort of the stated reason for having the 6:30 AM delivery time options? Okay. And I guess the question is, since you guys haven't implemented really a shift structure, if you guys were to start a shift sort of later in the morning, what's the disadvantage to having a crew bring in deliveries sort of at the end of a shift that would, like, say, a shift that ended at like 9:00 or 10:00 AM, to bring in deliveries from, you know, like 7:00 to 9:00, and then have your first shift start at like 10:00 or something like that? Would there be any disadvantage to a shift structure like that? Just out of curiosity?
You have to use the microphone, sorry. Just want to...
Well, the shift structure that we went with for 6:30 in the morning was so that we could avoid the morning traffic with the buses and the peak travel time, or, you know, peak time in the morning. As far as a disadvantage, we're not having trucks delivered in the evening. I think we committed that we would stop at 8:00 at night. So, when you're running a rotating shift, you're using parts on third shift. So, the start of the shift isn't as important as having parts there for the parts that you deplete at night. So, that's the reason.
Well, I was just saying hypothetically, if you were to, say, start your first shift at 10:00 AM, and that would also still avoid all traffic issues if you were to really start a shift at 10:00 AM, that wouldn't really, you would still accomplish the goal of traffic issues. And then you were to run deliveries, say, like 7:30, 7:00 to 8:30, or something like 7:00 to 8:30, delay half an hour, maybe an hour, run 7:30 to 9:00 or something like that? Would there be a real disadvantage to operating under that kind of shift structure as opposed to the one that you currently have proposed?
I understand. So, the shift structure is not as important?
Sure. So, it's easier to go, yeah, but it's...
Okay. The shift structure and the start times is not as important as the amount of time we can't replenish parts. So, shutting down at 8:00 from a part standpoint, because we are planning on running three shifts when we ramp up and get the lines up and running. So, it's the amount of time that we don't have parts available for delivery in the evening. So, whether we're running first shift or third shift at that point in time, we need to replenish the parts because we're not replenishing it during the evening since 8:00. So, that, the shift, the start of the shift is not as important as the amount of time that we're not replenishing parts in the evening.
So, currently, you have deliveries slated from 6:30 to 8:00, and I don't know whether or not the residents would be more flexible on the 8:00 PM side, so I was thinking if you were to say 7:30 to 9:00 was the same amount of time. It's an hour later both times. It's an hour later in the morning, and it's an hour later in the evening. So, you have the same number of total hours. Would that be, would that affect you much at all if you went to like 7:30 to 9:00 for deliveries?
It could. It could affect us. It could affect our distribution schedules of our folks that, in our distribution department. Yeah.
Do you, would you anticipate that effect to be significant, or would you expect that to be something that you could handle? Say, if you were to have the same number of hours, like I said, right now, you're 6:30 to 8:00. If you were to go, for example, 7:30 to 9:00, if the number of hours of allowed delivery were not to change, would you anticipate that if we were to shift, you know, 30 minutes or an hour in one direction, would that be something that you guys could handle, or do you think that would be a very significant disruption?
I think it would be significant disruption to the lives of the employees that have been working those hours, those same hours over at our building on, what's the address of, the warehouse at Progress Street? Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for answering the question.
Okay.
Other questions? Katie?
Okay, thank you. I just had a question about the proposed, the parking that will be under the cover, and that is only, will only be covered once that second phase is built, is that correct? Okay. And so, just noting that in the meantime, it will not be in compliance with the flexible parking plan, but so I think that we have a condition in the draft, the draft approval that says that you have to do that by, build it by 2022 or bring this into compliance. So, I just want to make sure that that was something you were aware of and comfortable with.
We are.
Okay. And then also in terms of the bicycle parking, I know you had added a little bit more detail in there, but it still wasn't clear, I think, whether or not the proposed bicycle parking, the actual, you know, structures met with the zoning bylaws. I just wanted to make sure you had talked to planning about what those requirements are and felt comfortable that you could still get the 30 bicycle parking spots in there.
We have, and we are.
Okay. And then my other question is about, so, right now, you're proposing to build a sidewalk that just connects kind of the interior out to the exterior and to do a crosswalk, I think, and then to make some contributions. So, how long is that sidewalk going to be? The part that you will build?
I am guessing, just based on the driveway width of about 24 feet, 50, what do you think, Jim? 250, 2? Couple hundred to 250 feet?
Okay. All right. 250 feet. Okay. Because I think in here, while we appreciate the very generous donations, especially to our recreation department and other things that, you know, I know you've already made one for this year, I think the estimate that we sort of use for calculating out how much we ask people to donate to our sidewalk or other funds in lieu of building a sidewalk along the entire frontage was around $71,000, and I believe that sort of the contributions that you've proposed so far would essentially add up to $45,000, plus you get the benefit of doing it over a number, I think both are over three years, and get publicity specifically for the summer concert series as part of that, which are good things, and again, you know, not opposed to those. But my question is, I guess, you know, I think we should think about, or would you be opposed to bringing that number up to the 71,000? And then I had a question for Selby because I thought some of these benefits, particularly the $5,000 to transportation, were going to be negotiated as part of the TIF as opposed to the site plan, and so I just want to know kind of what those differences are and if there are any contributions that are part of the TIF and not part of the site plan.
Katie, let me just point out that section 3.2.3 of the conditions contemplates an additional contribution.
Right. So, I want to ask what they're comfortable with, what we're comfortable with. I think it's going to be a point that we need to talk about, but I just kind of wanted to bring up that, yeah, right now, as proposed, it's not up to the 71,250, and then I just wanted to clarify what's part of the TIF versus...
These donations to the recreation department and the participation in the transportation program are apart, they're separate from the TIF.
Okay. And there are no donations as part of the TIF itself?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just as I could, because one thing we learned when we negotiated with AES a year ago, and this was from Mass Office of Business Development, is those type of things should not be in the kind of tax agreement. They're kind of separate as an MOU, and that's what we ended up doing, so it would be totally separate from the TIF.
Right. Yeah. I guess I think, you know, it had been my understanding that there might be some, and particularly the shuttle donation, that would be part of an MOU, and then I feel a little bit like it's double-counted if it's instead part of making up for not building a sidewalk. So, either way, we would, if this was a, if this was a site plan that didn't have a TIF attached to it at all, we would require or generally ask for this $71,000 donation based on their frontage. And then apart from that, there's a TIF where I think we had talked about adding an MOU that would have some donations, particularly to transportation. So, I just want to be clear that those are kind of now one thing, and we're not getting both benefits, which, you know, again, can be okay, we just need to talk about that. Those are my main issues, and again, I think that will be something that we need to talk about as a board, but that's kind of my last sticking point.
Yes. So, again, this is a, we understand that the bylaws, you know, we weren't aware of that, although perhaps we should have been until the previous meeting that we had here. So, we are prepared. We had requested a waiver in the proposal with those contributions that we would be making. If that is not acceptable, then we would propose putting in a sidewalk.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Here.
How's that? Alex Para, Madam Chair. We really, I just want to say, we really greatly appreciate having worked with Roland on this decision, and the 3.2.3 that you mentioned is really the only condition in the decision that's still, in our view, in contention. And so, I just want to point out that the proposal that is in the draft decision is the $30,000 for Acton Recreation, the $15,000 for the Acton Shuttle, the crosswalk to the sideways on the other side, the 250-feet sidewalk inside, and I think all of those things are a fair and reasonable equivalent of what would be the calculated donation. Having said that, if that's not what the board wants, as John, you know, mentioned, Insulet is willing to put in the sidewalk, we would need to actually add a slight revision to the draft decision because there's nothing in there that actually says that you can construct the sidewalk. That was my only comment. Thank you.
Other questions? Peter?
Yeah, I wasn't here at the last meeting, and I did review the video and read all the documents, but I couldn't see the red laser pointer on the video, so I just had some questions. Is that location where you talked about the new HVAC design, is that where the original HVAC was that you were talking about last time? I understood most of the concerns from residents were about noise and lights, and there were some questions about the HVAC.
So, the existing HVAC, so let's say somebody moves in, they occupy the building, and they use the building as it is. The existing HVAC units are located here.
Okay.
Okay? Notice how open it is in that area?
Yeah.
That's higher in elevation. The mechanical rooms for the new addition are located in this area and here. So, it makes sense to have the units in close proximity to the mechanical room. Plus, recognizing, hearing some of those concerns from the abutters, we felt that there are a couple ways to buffer the sound. Basically, it's an air conditioning unit-type sound, and so in that area, what we're proposing on the backside, is that still working, or am I not seeing it?
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
I'm exhausted. Well, in any event, if you wouldn't mind, thank you. So, the units, oh, there it is. Okay. So, the units themselves are going to be enveloped on three sides, as you can see from vegetation, and that is a cedar, so that will dampen any sound, so with respect to the concerns of sound. And also, if you look to the northwest of that area in there, it ascends in grade. So, from the pad, the concrete pad down below to the elevation up above is almost a 20-foot grade change. So, that will absorb some of the sound as well.
Chris Sladd from CI Design. The other element to that, we're building a pump house underneath the mechanical units, which doesn't exist today. So, the pumps and chillers and the mechanical units that were shown that are exposed, that being screened, there's really no noise from those units. It's the pumps and the VFDs and everything that drive the units is where the noise comes from. Currently, they're exposed to the air, and they're old and inefficient, and where Wayne pointed out before, we're actually building an enclosure around them, inside an actual enclosure that's going to maintain any sound above and beyond the screening and everything else that Wayne just pointed out.
Okay. Just so I understand, does this eliminate the cooling kind of towers you put on top of buildings? Are these in place of that? You'll still have a cooling tower on top of the building for the air conditioning?
Well, you won't have cooling towers, you have rooftop units. So, there's existing rooftop units that currently exist today. We're replacing them in kind with more efficient, updated units. We're also providing screening, which does not exist today, so the screening from a visual and a sound effect will help reduce any concerns regarding the existing units, but those are rooftop units and not cooling towers. The cooling towers and pumps and VFDs and everything, as Wayne pointed out, is here, which couldn't be any closer and unscreened and basically just up on dented steel. So, above and beyond of being on a higher elevation, you're also on dented steel raising the units up higher from the ground as well. So, we're going to have, we'll replace the existing RTUs, we'll screen the existing, we'll screen the new RTUs. We're going to have new RTUs, rooftop units for the existing facility. Those will also be screened for a sound and visual effect, and then we're taking the old unit that's loud and not... that's loud and not, has zero enclosure, zero screening, um, and we're relocating it to this location here, um, and that's the, the towers that you're talking about.
Okay.
We're, we could put them on the roof, um, but it's just poor design and, and it would be very insensitive to the neighbors if we did that.
Okay, and where's the generator that, uh, you were talking about?
There's, um, currently proposed generators would be under this facility right here, there is, um, the grades, uh, is hard to tell and plan, um, but basically, the generators are under this addition, that's what, what we are currently looking at is these four units here, which due to the design progressing over the course of the couple of weeks, because it's a fast-track project, that they're, um, we're realizing that four is not required, there's actually only two, they're still being relocated, um, as needed here, um, so it's actually under the building and in kind of a retained earth enclosure, uh, which would be this wall here. So, from any location here, you won't be able to see it here, they're basically blocked from grade, blocked from retaining wall, and then built over.
And those, obviously, emergency generators that, if the power goes down, you use, but you have to test every week or something?
Month. They're typically, from a commercial standpoint, that, uh, general, commercial generators are tested monthly, um, they're also, and yes, they're, if the power, um...
And how long do they run for when you test them?
Uh, each one is different, but I, it's usually thirty to sixty, depending on the generator, but it's no more than thirty to sixty minutes.
Okay.
These generators, unlike the current generator that exists today, um, these generators also will have a sound attenuated enclosures on them as well, so in order to actually service and start, you actually open the enclosure, you walk in, in, in actual enclosure, and the components of the generator are actually in a, an enclosure, above and beyond the location of the generator.
Yeah.
Which doesn't currently exist today. Right now, what's out there today is just a generator on a pad, so...
Okay, and, uh, I think with the lights, uh, I mean, our bylaw does comply with the International Dark Sky Association standards, uh, and I understand you're complying, that obviously headlights from cars are a different story, but I understand that screening along the, the kind of northeasterly parking lot is, is intended to keep light from infiltrating into the neighbor's property on that side of the site. And, uh, I just, the question, and then it's, so is that the loading area where you just, you have the generators also, is that the loading area there?
Correct, there's the, um, shipping area here and the receiving area here.
And you're talking about FedEx or UPS-type vehicles generally, um, do you use, uh, what do you call those things where you, you know, um, remove, um, pallets and stuff? Do you use those to unload the trucks, or they unloaded by hand? Are they large pallets of materials you bring in that you use, uh?
They're, they're going to be either a hand pallet, or they're going to be doling brought in, correct? Oh, yeah, pallet checks? Right.
So what do you call those things that you move pallets around with?
Forklifts.
Forklifts, do you use for, motorized forklifts? Okay.
Right.
And then these, these next, uh, let, let, let me just ask you another question about the sidewalks, uh, so it doesn't show on that plan necessarily, on the plan we have here, the sidewalk appears to come around to the proposed three-story future expansion down there, and, and it just, is that ends now, and that would be the extension that you would do out to the road and the crosswalk? And is there now a sidewalk along the entire, um, entry? I didn't get to go out there today, I was gonna, but, yeah.
There's a sidewalk.
So that would connect with an existing sidewalk, okay.
On the other side of the, so on the other side of the road, there's a sidewalk.
Right, and so if, if, uh, we have to work on this issue about the contribution, but if, if, uh, we can't work that out, you're saying you would build a sidewalk along the entire site plan from, uh, and along the entire frontage from, say, the north or the eastern corner there, down?
Correct.
Connect?
Correct.
Okay, this may be questions more for Roland or, or, um, Selby, and, I mean, I, I, you know, we can talk about the number, I don't have any problem with, um, uh, spreading it out, uh, I do have a serious problem with taking what's been identified as sidewalk money, and as I read, and I don't know if you're involved in this, or this came from the staff, as I read the bylaw saying that we can waive the requirement for sidewalks, uh, to require a contribution to, uh, moving pedestrians or bicycle, um, movement, I am seriously concerned, the sidewalk committee makes a recommendation to contribute money to a sidewalk fund in lieu of building sidewalk, we've worked long and hard, the sidewalk committee, to build up the sidewalk fund and actually build sidewalks in town, there were many years, uh, before the sidewalk committee was formed, during which only the neighborhoods that raised the biggest stink actually got sidewalks built in it, the sidewalk committee has worked zealously to come up with standards for identifying which roads in town are the highest priority for sidewalks, they have, um, a whole list, they keep getting, um, requests from citizens throughout the town to build sidewalks, there's a huge demand for them, I saw in the ZBA decision on the forty B for Martin Street, that, uh, the sidewalk committee again had recommended a donation to the sidewalk fund, the ZBA decided, I assume with the recommendation of staff, to require, um, that a contribution be made to be divided between sidewalks in that neighborhood and recreation improvements at Jones Field, I talked to Roland, his opinion was the selectmen would decide how to, um, divide up that contribution, some sixty thousand dollars between sidewalks in Jones Field, I have no problems with recreation in town, I think we need a lot more, uh, recreation improvements, I do have a serious problem with the sidewalk committee being completely ignored and creating new funds that don't exist before for purposes that I understand aren't identified in the zoning bylaw, uh, I don't have as much of a problem with transportation, although that certainly is not sidewalks, at least it's intended to get people out of their cars and move them around town, which is the purpose of sidewalks, so that's my concern, um, and certainly the transportation piece, you know, your employees may be using the transportation, there's more demand on transportation, that's fine, but I don't, I think it should be a policy decision of this board about how sidewalk money is going to start getting diverted to fund recreation problems, uh, projects in town, so I don't know who wants to respond to that, whether it was you folks that talked about recreation, or, I know you might have some volleyball players that are going to play at Jones Field or whatever, but, um, I, I would like to hear from the staff on that.
After the last, uh, public hearing, I had a phone call from a senior executive in Insulet who's not in this room, and, uh, he expresses his frustration with the request for the sidewalk contribution, um, stipulated, explaining that Insulet had already donated to the recreation, um, uh, programs at Nera Park, that they were planning on participating in the transportation program, and, um, that if we were going to force Insulet to spend seventy thousand dollars on sidewalks, he was going to start pulling jobs, now, this is, this is this person telling me this, so what I suggested to him was that they note the number of donations that they were planning to give to the town, and to have that as a discussion point with the board of selectmen, uh, on the sidewalk fund contribution.
Um, I think it's just important to note, too, that the constructed sidewalk is thirty thousand dollars, we have a construction manager look at the cost of constructing the sidewalk compared to seventy-three thousand dollars, which is also somewhat, I think, maybe, uh, unsettling point, so if the decision is to contribute to a fund or construct a sidewalk, then we'll construct the sidewalk for the thirty-three thousand dollars that we know that we constructed for.
Okay, again, I don't have a problem, uh, you know, talking about the number, I would suggest that the decision be amended to just say contribute the money to the sidewalk fund, if this board of selectmen decides to take money out of the sidewalk fund to re, to fund recreation programs, or to fund transportation programs, then that's fine, but I think we should have that discussion before that is mandated in a, uh, decision. The decision for Martin Street said simply contribute money, uh, to a new fund I never heard of, for, which includes recreation, um, but I understood the board of selectmen would decide how to divide those funds up, this one specifies exactly how the money's supposed to be spent, and I have a serious problem with that, the sidewalk committee has been ignored completely, nobody talks to the sidewalk committee, they make a recommendation, nobody gets back to them, and you're making recommendations to spend what they consider to be sidewalk money for other purposes. Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm not, this is an internal town politics issue, so I'm not, I'm talking about the developer at all, I, I can talk about the number, I think that's fine, I'm just recommending that, that the decision be amended to say there'll be a number contributed, or you'll build a sidewalk, whichever we decide, but not identify particular things other than sidewalks, the money should be spent.
Peter, do you have anything else right now?
No.
Okay, Joe?
Yes, thank you for your revisions, last week, we had a shopping center come in, and the neighbors were concerned about the green barrier between the shopping center and the housing, and here, this green barrier above the wall, is there some way with snowplowing, damage, and all those things, we can be assured that that green barrier will be maintained over the years?
Hi, I'm Jim Almonte from Waterman Design Associates, um, the one, the one thing to... Yeah. It doesn't work that well either. You're talking about this area here with the, uh...
That area, and then the corner next to the Avon.
Yeah, well, vegetation on this side is actually, will be protected by a guardrail and the retaining wall, so that vegetation will not be exposed, so that should not be an issue with snow storage, as far as this area is concerned, it is on the edge of the parking lot, we are restricted on, um, the northeast side by the natural heritage line, so we don't have a lot of room there to, uh, plant vegetation, but there's about ten-plus feet in there, so we feel that there is enough room, um, for that vegetation, uh, and, and snow storage, so, I mean, the, the one thing, I, I would anticipate Insulet is going to maintain their grounds, um, you know, it's obviously their corporate headquarters, their image they want to maintain, so I would imagine there would be a landscape plan in place to, you know, come through and, and do a spring cleanup, and at that point, you know, replace any material that might, might be dead or dying, that's typically what happens, so, um, you know, I, I can't speak specifically to the maintenance plan that will be in place, but that's typically what happens.
Because that's a very narrow stretch.
Right.
And for snowplowing, I, I can anticipate that there'd be some damage to the trees.
Right, yeah, we have, uh, snow storage designated on the plans, we'll take a look at that to make sure that it is not, um, in that area.
It, it would not be objectionable or a problem to add a condition to the, uh, site plan approval that we submit a maintenance plan at the time of application for building permit, or another, uh, appropriate time.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay, um, I want to get back to this whole sidewalk issue, because I, um, I actually, I, I understand Peter's concern about what's happening, I actually am not, I hadn't even thought about the, the fact that, um, we were sort of offsetting, uh, the sidewalk contribution with all, out of consideration for these other contributions, but, um, is, I don't know if Roland or Selby knows, if, if they're paying thirty K to Rack and fifteen K to the shuttle, and they're also putting in two-hundred-and-fifty feet of sidewalk, what does that leave?
It's about fifteen thousand, I just did a quick math, so it brings it down, I mean, if you talk about two-hundred-and-fifty feet off of the fourteen-twenty-five of frontage, it's about eleven-seventy-five, and then we do fifty dollars a linear foot, which is about fifty-eight thousand, fifty-eight, fifty-nine thousand, yeah, so, and they're doing forty-five right now over a series of years, which normally we ask for it at once, but I'm not opposed to the years.
I, I, yeah, I understand, uh, you know, in this instance, for, on Nagard Park, you know, there is a sidewalk going the full length on the other side of the street, and, and there actually were, when I went, I went there one weekend, and there were, this is the weekend, and there were people walking all along there, which was very nice, I mean, and there were people, I think, I, I think DRB, um, I went to their meeting to talk about this site, and one of the questions they had was the idea of trying to, um, create walking areas for, for the employees when they were on break, and I, you know, it wasn't clear, I don't really know the site well enough to know if that's feasible, but I thought, well, if they wanted to go on break, they could walk along the same sidewalk, uh, it's fairly long and it ends in a cul-de-sac, um, and a turnaround, and I gather, we gather from what we heard from some of the neighbors, um, at the last meeting, that there's drag racing, because, um, I guess it's pretty quiet and vacant at night, so, um, but that would presumably, um, ease off, because, um, Insulet at least will be there, a presence pretty much around the clock, um, but I, I, okay, so it's like fifteen thousand dollars difference, taking into consideration all the other factors, so Peter, you're inclined to just say they should pay the full value of whatever, seventy, seventy thousand, or whatever it is?
Well, I, again, I'm, I'm, uh, I mean, they're saying if we require them to pay the full value, they'll just build the sidewalk, so is, is there a sidewalk along that frontage that they would build the sidewalk, does the sidewalk on the other side of the road extend that far too, all the way up to the cul-de-sac, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, it goes, it goes all, it goes the full length, I mean, it's just the only...
So it doesn't really make sense to have a sidewalk on both sides of the street, even the sidewalk committee agrees with that.
Yeah.
So, you know, the number is open for negotiation, I mean, I, we'd probably rather get less of a donation than have them build the sidewalk, because it's less expensive for them to do that.
Just to, I, I use the sidewalk.
But all I'm saying is, whatever the donation is, it ought to go to the sidewalk fund, and we can decide, if the staff wants to come to us and say, we think you ought to take money out of the sidewalk fund to fa, fund the Jones Field improvements, then we can decide that as a policy matter, but I don't think they ought to write it into a zoning decision.
Maybe, maybe the, the planning director has some wisdom to share with us.
Well, first, for clarification, uh, the donation amount, or even the, the donation as a matter of fact is not stipulated in the zoning bylaw, zoning bylaw merely requires the construction of a sidewalk along the frontage and gives the board of selectmen authority to waive that.
Waive it for the purpose of safe movement of pedestrians and bicyclists.
The, uh, the other piece is, is that the amount of construction, uh, the amount of dollars estimated for the linear foot of sidewalk is based on public construction, so prevailing wages, what it would cost the town to construct it, so a private entity tends to be able to do that for less money, so there's certainly room to negotiate for, you know, contribution versus building a sidewalk, and yes, uh, you know, it is a, it is a new, a new thing to have donations in lieu of constructing sidewalks to go to something other than sidewalk fund or, um, other transportation improvements or amenities that, uh, are for alternative types of transportation, this would be a relatively new thing.
How do you consider recreation, transportation?
Okay.
For the record, Insulet has no objection to redirecting the proposed, uh, donations to the sidewalk fund.
Is your proposal the thirty thousand, or whatever you consider, where you could build the sidewalk that you'd be required to load that?
I think, I think you heard the number, approximately thirty thousand to construct, the proposal that's in the draft decision is the thirty thousand plus fifteen, forty-five thousand plus...
Building the...
Some of the additional work on the crosswalk.
So, about, what'd you say, fifty-eight? You're saying fifty-eight when you add it up, if you put the fifty-dollar, uh, linear foot number to the, okay.
Question though, because you've already made a ten-thousand-dollar donation to recreation, and we've already accepted it, so, my question is, is that forty-five thousand dollars include that ten thousand dollars, because we've already accepted it for recreation, so honestly, it would be thirty-five at this point that would go to sidewalk fund, um, or are you willing to do that above and beyond the ten thousand dollars from this year that was previously donated to recreation?
No, we would propose the, the net being the, the...
No, we would propose the net being the 45, so that would be, we've already spent 10, so the donation, if you, the proposal would be to redirect it to the sidewalk fund, if that's what you want, the remaining, so 45 minus the 10.
Okay. And then future negotiations about any donations to recreation, I assume if they, you know, could come ask, and I think the, I mean, you know, I'm a little, I'm a little peeved by what Selby said, if there was a conversation about threatening to pull jobs, because we negotiated a TIF that I presented at town meeting that requires you to have 1,000 jobs here, and we're giving you a pretty large tax incentive to do that. So, you know, I don't like the idea that if we're then asking for reasonable donations that are, that are part of any site plan, that that is used to try to say that, you know, you're not going to bring as many jobs here as was previously agreed and would be required under the TIF that we're negotiating. So, you know, I want to put that out there. I'm not super thrilled with that, but I would like you to also be open to, and, you know, understanding that we're being pretty amenable here, that when our recreation department comes and asks for future donations for next year's summer concert series, or donations to our transportation fund, if your employees start to use the transportation system, that that be considered.
That absolutely is our intent. Would be on an ongoing basis to have those discussions, as would all the community outreach programs that we've offered to participate in.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, let me just, just let me just follow up here. So, you're proposing a $45,000 contribution plus building that, the extension and the crosswalk? Is that what you were talking about?
The park, the interior walkway.
They're billing 250 feet, and then there's the 45K, 10K of which we've already accepted, balance of which 35K will now be redirected to the sidewalk committee, if I understand the discussion.
And you're asking to spread that out the way that this proposed decision reads?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Audience, anybody? Oh, Mr. Bartle has something else to add.
I'm not sure what spreading out means, but basically what I'm hearing, I'm just trying to, since I'm going to have to make whatever draft changes are going to be to that draft, 45,000 to the sidewalk fund.
It's down to 35 now, because they've already made a 10,000.
35,000, yes, okay, thank you.
I thought they wanted to spread it out in three, over three years, let me see what the...
I think the three years were, were relative to the events for the donation for the site, for the recreation occasions to be in three...
Okay, and, well, all right, so we already accepted that, whether it was over three years or not, but that's okay. And then annually donate to the active shuttle in the amount of 5,000 for a period of three years, so...
Yeah, I mean, so, okay, so that's, is that going to stay, or is that going to be, because typically when we do donations, we're saying, you do that at the time of building permit, or maybe certificate of occupancy permit and be done with it, and then you have it in your discretion to do whatever you want to do with that.
Well, it's up for board discussion, I think that's what they're requesting. I assume you're also still offering to allow us to use the parking lot on the front?
That was my other question, is that still part of the deal, part of the package?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's the question, do you, does the board want to spread out? I guess it's 35,000 to the...
We can, when it comes time to discuss, we can talk about stuff like that, okay? But are there any other, are there questions, comments from the audience? Any general audience members? No? Okay. Now it's time for us to talk, and we can also talk about whether we want to close the hearing or not, so.
Let's ask them first, do you have a preference about spreading the kind of remaining $35,000 out? You know, essentially, it would be a total of $15,000 for three years, you'd give us maybe another 5K for the sidewalk fund this year, and then $15,000 for the next two years in the sidewalk fund versus doing the remaining $35,000 at, you know, certificate of occupancy? Do you have a preference?
Say that again.
Do you have a preference of spreading the $45,000 out over three years? So, you've already given us 10,000 this year, we would say give us 5,000 for the sidewalk fund this year, and then $15,000 in two more years, over two more years, for the sidewalk fund? Or just do the remaining $35,000 to the sidewalk fund upon certificate of occupancy?
We would like to spread it out to the three, and then engage in conversations as we talk about community.
Community things, yep. Okay. Okay.
So then, at this point, at least my questions have been answered, so I'd make a motion to close the hearing. Somebody want to second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Katie moves and Ching Sung seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So, we're closed now, no further evidence or information. Now for discussion, does anybody have any, what are people's sentiments right now? I assume people are inclined to approve, and it's a matter of what conditions you want, or you just want some of the conditions that are in the draft modified, say, to reflect the issue, the sidewalk issue and the like? Anybody?
I'll make a motion to include a landscape maintenance plan over the life of the facility.
You want, you want to add that as a condition?
Yes.
Any discussion?
So, just to clarify, that's just the submission of a maintenance plan to be included, you know, as far as what they want, is that, is that just, they're just a plan to make sure that they have it in place? Okay, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Anyone else?
Are we doing this as a separate motion, or are we just going to...
I think, you know, first of all, Joan has suggested adding that condition, and unless anybody has any strenuous objections, I mean, we can, we can include it and then vote on, finally, once we agree on what conditions we want in on the entire thing, so. Are there any, aside from the discussion that we've just had about the sidewalk provision, which I think Roland, I think understands what we want to do, are there any other provisions that nobody's addressed that need addressing?
No.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
So, the only change we're making is, so the changes we're making, I just want to make sure I understand what's going on here. The changes that we're making are to change the, the destination of the donated funds from whatever the fund it says here, I can't remember, to the sidewalk fund, right? That's one change. And the second change is Jones' inclusion of the landscape maintenance plan, and those are the only changes we're making?
Well, the, it's slightly different in terms of, and Roland will have to kind of word it, how we say it, but it's slightly different because the language right now doesn't quite do that for the donation, so it would be any, it would be make a donation, a one-time donation to the town's recreation department in the amount of $10,000, as well as a one-time donation. It gets a little weird, because then you have to say, a one-time donation this year, a $5,000 to the sidewalk fund, and a donation of $15,000 for a period of two years, the following two years to the sidewalk fund, as well as keeping the language on the free use of the parking, and then not including another.
Maybe, maybe on the payment, we could just say, they're going to pay a total of 45,000 over the course of three years, with 15,000 to be paid out, 10, this year, 10,000 to recreation, which has already been paid, 5K to sidewalk committee, then the next year, 15,000 to the sidewalk, and 15, in the final year, 15,000. And then what Katie mentioned about the parking use, and then Jones' addition of landscape maintenance plan.
Does that make sense, Roland?
Not entirely. The, the findings are what the findings are, they're just taking into account, acknowledging what the applicant has offered, okay? That's in section...
Oh, I see, so that's just what they proposed?
That's just what they proposed.
So, we would have left that the same.
So, and then you're taking this and deliberating, and then you come up with a condition.
Right.
Well, at first, a plan modification in 317 that says you show on the plan that sidewalk extension along the driveway down to Nagark Park Drive, and with the crosswalk and all that stuff.
Yeah, so we'd leave that the same.
And that's, I think I heard you say you want to leave that in.
Yeah.
And then you want to, 323, I would say, delete the part in the second phrase that starts "and" in addition to the applicant's commitment cited in paragraph one, or 221, and then just, and then, of this decision, and then "and donate", and then I was going to say, $35,000 to the town, call it sidewalk fund, annually, in two increments annually from the date of the filing of this decision with the town clerk. But now I'm hearing you have other funds, and I, I thought you already received $10,000.
We did.
Okay, so that leaves 35,000, right?
Yeah, I guess that's true, we don't need to put it in the plan if we've already received it.
So, you don't need to put that in there, exactly.
Yeah, that's true. So, let's do 35K to sidewalk fund.
You just say 35K in two, two payments over two years.
Yeah, except I think they were kind of thinking they already did 10,000 this year, so it would only be 5,000 this year, and then 15,000 for the following two years, so it'd be over three payments.
Oh, first payment, 5,000 at time of building permit, and then two...
Yeah.
Two more 15,000.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I mean, the thing is, it would be nice if we could acknowledge what they were proposing. I mean, they were proposing to donate 10,000, and, and we've already accepted the first payment, so it'd be nice to sort of acknowledge that we've received the first years proposed payment.
I can add that to the finding?
Just so that it's clear, so it's not sort of this weird loose end, I mean, so that it's accounted toward the total monies that were...
I could recognize that in the finding.
If I can recognize it in the finding, that that particular $10,000...
Yeah, just modify the finding to say that that payment's already been made.
We accepted that at the last meeting, as a gift.
Yeah, you weren't here.
So, just trying to make sure I identify that correctly.
That's the 10,000 to the Diamond sponsorship loan?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other, the other condition I would add, because that is standing sort of on its own, is to take him up on that parking annually on 4th of July.
Oh, right, we should make that.
And add that as a new item under other 327 or something like that.
Okay, then I'm going to make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan special permit number 3172017-464 with the changes noted to the draft decision.
Somebody want to second?
That includes the...
Landscape, yep.
Yeah, the changes we've just discussed, that's what she's...
Yeah, I'll second it.
3211, it says the applicant shall be diligent to ensure that no construction debris leave the site. Does that mean onto adjacent land?
Right. Yeah, so things aren't flying off on, you know...
But they can remove because...
Yes, yeah, right. No, they've got to leave, they've got to leave it all. That would be a little weird if they just leave it all.
Yeah, that's sort of a standard condition, but yeah, it does, you could interpret it to be very funny and intentionally so.
It was just a typo in 3.2.3, to the extent that's going to be changed.
It's going to be changed.
But it, it's, it's paragraph 2.2.1, not 2.21, so that was just a typo.
All right, so Katie moved, and Peter, did you second?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Great. Thank you. And we have two selectmen's business items, first, South Acton Train Station parking for motorcycles and scooters. Mr. Manager, you know something about this, I gathered there is a temporary fix for the situation there, so...
Oh, I guess, it's a little of both.
Corey is here, so perhaps you could...
Yeah, this recommendation is put together by both Public Works Director and the Police Chief. There's been some issue about, geez, if you have scooters and motorcycles, what do you do? So, I mean, Corey could speak to the recommendation if he's ready.
Yeah, this question came up at the last train committee meeting, a resident who drives a motorcycle approached about trying to incorporate some spaces sized more for motorcycles so that he wouldn't be taking a regular-sized parking space. Currently, I believe, he was indicating that he was parking up in around the, around the bike lockers and bike racks and over on the concrete plaza, so he'd asked, having, see if we could incorporate something like that. During the discussion, it also came about the scooters parking, I guess, in near the bike lockers, and it was making it difficult for some of the bicyclists to get their bikes out, so we met with the police department, kind of looked logically at different places that, in the short term, while we're trying to do some of the upgrades and that, where we could put them. And there was an area for the scooters sort of alongside the train station, we thought we can kind of congregate them on, over there, and give them a place where they can park. And then for the motorcycles, sort of in between where the new parking meters are and where the bike lockers are, there's an area there that the town and MBTA kind of use in the winter for snow plowing, getting the snow out of the way. So, during the season, sort of the spring, summer, and fall, we thought it'd be, it might be a place we could probably get like four spaces without impacting the existing parking now, and we'd give them a place to park, we could put some signs up, and I'm talking with the police, we were looking at, if we can get four in there, we were thinking of making two of them resident stickers, and then the other two we could put into the meters, so gives kind of, kind of spreads it out. I think, talking with the police, I think they've seen, usually they see about two motorcycles, so we were planning four, and then we'd see what kind of a demand comes as we do that, so.
Katie? Couple questions, Corey, would the metered spaces be the same $5 a day that the car?
Currently, that's what we were looking at, yeah.
Okay, so it'd be the same, even though it's like a smaller space?
Yeah.
And then the scooter parking that you proposed kind of up near the, on that concrete area, kind of near some of the bike lockers, would that be free?
Right now, yes, we, I, I mean, it could change, but we hadn't really, I don't know if a scooter is really a glorified bike or a downsized motorcycle, it's, I'm not quite sure. I know the police were kind of looking into it, but right now, we were kind of trying to just segregate them from the, where the bicycles park, so...
Okay. And then, yeah, I feel like I see one scooter there maybe, so it's not like a huge number. And are we pretty sure that the motorcycle parking won't impact where the shuttles come in the morning, especially the train I take, that there's two shuttles now that have to park there? I just want to make sure that it doesn't bump up against, they still have enough turning and parking room there?
Yeah, this should be, this shouldn't be bad, from what I see, I'm looking online, a lot of the times, the motorcycle parking is like four and a half to five feet wide, and then about, I think I've seen them like eight or nine feet long.
Okay.
So, it would kind of fit in that corner without getting close to the bus.
Okay. And then, I know we were talking about, this is sort of short-term, because you're looking at doing improvements on the main parking area, when do we anticipate at this point those improvements being done?
Right now, our goal is to try to get a lot of the drain repairs and any of the conduit work done, hopefully this spring, and then we'll have sometime over the summer months, while school's out, we'll coordinate a weekend that the pavers can come in, kind of mill and pave, and what I'd like to do is get the, sort of the first course of paving down this year, and let any settlement issues with all the... let any settlement issues with all the excavation work to settle up before we do the final. But I'm hoping that we'll have all that, the paving stuff done this summer, while it's kind of lightly used.
Right. And is it, do you anticipate at that time kind of having the final motorcycle part, you know, including final motorcycle parking in, at that point, or...
I think so. I think, we were looking at right now, I think it's a good spot, because come wintertime, when they're not there, we can, we can use that for the snow plows. It, I think it, it would impact probably about two or three parking spaces that, when we do the reconfiguration. But it was also an area that we were looking at for plowing, so I think the permanent, we were looking at right now, probably would be the permanent. It would just be a matter of what kind of demand happens when we...
Yeah, making sure it works. Okay. And, and I mean, I think the time, the seasonality makes sense, too, because, you know, people are probably using their motorcycles less when it's snowing out anyway, so it's not. Okay, well, I just want to say thank you for kind of responding very quickly to these concerns and coming up with what I think is a very reasonable plan, so thank you for doing that.
Anybody else? I have a question. Do, are there, I don't go to the commuter station, so I don't know, do motorcycles park in the regular car parking spaces? Because I know, you know, elsewhere, that's what they're supposed to do. I mean, it's not as if they have special motorcycle spaces everywhere, but...
I don't see a lot, I mean, most of the time, I see one or two motorcycles there. A lot of them are just parking up, up in the front, sort of where the bike lockers are. I think one person was indicating they were, they were parking on the new pad over on Maple Street till we put the bike lockers in, and they kind of got evicted, so they came on this side. But, once in a while, I'll see a motorcycle in a parking space, but we don't have a lot of motorcycles coming that I've seen yet, so.
Well, it seems to make sense, since they are a motor vehicle, they should be, I mean, they pay $5 wherever they're going to park, and, you know, if you're trying to park as near the bike area, you're trying to get a free, free ride, but, and then how many spaces did you, how many scooters did you say would fit in this proposed space, or do they just all get jammed in there, however?
It's hard to say that. I've seen, lately, I've been seeing upwards of three or four scooters, I think more so like two or three, somewhere in that range, so there'd be plenty of room for probably at least a half dozen there, and if it, if they just kept going down the plaza, we'll try to make more.
And that's free.
Right now, yeah.
Yeah, for now, yeah, but it might, if they start to pile on, then it might make sense to start charging them, so it doesn't become too attractive.
Yeah.
Remove the motor, take a bicycle, and then you get, well, anyhow, but, okay, great. Any other comments, questions? Does somebody want to make a movement, just, motion just to approve this proposed temporary fix, which...
So moved.
Anybody second?
Second. That includes the grace period?
Yep. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thanks very much, Corey, for responding, yeah, because I, I think, I was concerned that, you know, there would, might be this sort of temporary arrangement, and if we didn't officially endorse it, it might lead, it might lead to more confusion, so this way, you can go in there and put in signage, and do marks, markings on whatever with paint or whatever to make it set up, so I think it will resolve a problem that otherwise might have gotten worse at some point if we hadn't been prepared for it, so thank you for that. All right, we have notification of monopole placements, and I don't know if we have, we just have these, lots of handouts and images. This is MBA, this is a proposal that basically, we don't have any control about, over, this is by right. The company, the, the monopoles can go into the MBTA right away. The only option we have is, is to submit comments about the potential impact on historical properties, if we have any concerns. There's a 30-day comment period, which is why this is on the agenda today. We did get comments from, who was it, the Historical Commission? So, I mean, my thought was, unless people on this board have independent ideas about what to say, we could just submit a comment, basically referencing the, our Historical Commission's comments, although they also asked a question, why we were not notified directly.
They weren't.
Well, you know, it's just...
They have to be, and they weren't, so it is a legitimate concern.
Yeah.
They were notified because a member of the Historical Commission is also a member of the Historical Society, and the applicant notified the Historical Society and not the Historical Commission, which are two different boards. They have to notify the Historical Commission for this Section 106 review. I noticed today that Corey forwarded it to, I think you probably noticed the issue, and forwarded it to the HDC and the Historical Commission. Luckily, they had received it via Historical Society for their meeting on last Wednesday. But just to note, their comments are only about the one that's on Martin Street, so there are three others that they don't have comments or concerns with.
Thoughts? Peter?
I just had a general question about the purpose of these things. I assumed they were telephone monopoles, when I, cellphone things, when I first saw them. They call them in-motion monopole towers. Are these for operations of the trains?
I put a call into the MBTA, and the consultant that submitted it, I haven't heard back from them, but I was Googling online, trying to see what they were, and some articles, they were referring to being federally mandated for sort of train stopping technology, and then with the options of being able to put cellular data on it. Other articles, I was seeing comments about putting cameras for security, improved Wi-Fi and stuff for the trains, so I think it's, sounds like it's a multi-use, I'm not, some of the stuff in Concord, I think, were strictly, I think strictly cell tower stuff, when I was reading one article, so it depends on each location, I guess the...
Yeah, maybe if they're not going to use them for cell towers, they don't need a 70-foot tower, you know? I don't know, just for the train operations.
I was trying to figure out what these were for. I mean, I just basically got communications equipment, and it wasn't really clear that it was for specifically the train system or what it was, it just, but I realized that, well, aside from any objections we have based on historical preservation or historical properties and protecting them, we don't really have a whole lot of leverage in this case. Just, that's my understanding from, yeah.
Great. Corey, one of the members of the Historical Commission was mentioning me after their meeting, that in the past, when some of these poles have been proposed, we've requested balloon tests, where they put a balloon up as high as the pole would be, so you can see where it can be seen from. Is that something that we think could be appropriate here, and that would be worthwhile submitting as part of, you know, our comments for this review? Because I think, I mean, the one that's on Martin Street, you can see it, you can see it from the houses there, there's no question about that, but I think it would be worth doing, so we would see the, they, you know, be clear how visible it would be from all of the houses in that area, so that they could consider moving it, which, I'm not sure why they wouldn't, but...
Yeah, like I said, they, a lot of these wireless cell towers that come up, the planning department works with a consultant to do sort of those balloon tests. I don't see why you couldn't propose something here, just to see how much impact there is for the ones that are in question.
Yeah, so I would propose that we take the comments from the Historical Commission and add in that we would like them, we would request that they do a balloon test for the one on Martin Street, and I don't think the other ones are of much concern.
Yeah, we, I would suggest we say, if you, if you are not inclined to accept the suggestion, to move it. I mean, if they're just going to move it...
Oh, they're just going to move it, sure, don't do a balloon test, yeah.
Then we request you do a balloon test.
Right, okay.
And maybe moving it doesn't affect, you know, its, its ability to do whatever it's supposed to do in the first place.
Yeah. So, maybe I can work with the town manager on a letter, and we'll just get it out with your proposed suggestions, the Historical Commission comments, and then this suggestion that they move the Martin Street pole, or alternatively, do a test, so that we have an idea of what the impact is going to be on the neighboring properties, so. Is there a motion?
Do you need... I move to authorize the chairperson and town manager to write a letter with their comments incorporating the Historical Commission's comments, and requesting that they either move the pole on Martin Street, or, and/or conduct a balloon test to show impact on the neighborhood.
Second.
Okay, Katie moves, Peter seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? I forgot to ask you, David, if you had any comments. I just, I'm sitting, looking at the audience, and I'm thinking, oh, well, anyhow. You're welcome to comment belatedly.
It doesn't matter too much now, but the, the two things, you can see one of these poles at Crosby Corner, you know, next to Route 2. It's just a white 70-foot pole. The second thing is that I think the, the only leverage the Acton Historical Commission has is to work with the Massachusetts Historical Commission that has some leverage over MBTA right of ways. So I think the Massachusetts Historical Commission has no direct...
Acton Historical Commission does not, but the Massachusetts Historical Commission generally looks to the local Historical Commission for their comments, so that's why they provide them, and why they are supposed to be notified, and we're a bit upset they weren't.
And the, and the last thing, I wasn't aware that the Pittsburgh line was already getting the positive train control work. These may relate to that, I really don't know. I know that there are a couple of the lines out of South Station are getting the positive train control, some preliminary work. So the positive train control is technology that'll bring the trains to a halt should something happen to the engineer on the train. Like the one in Pennsylvania, just out, not very far outside of New York City.
Is this in the historic district? I think Martin Street is, no, it's right outside.
No, no, the HDC would like it to be in the historic district.
But it was the same issues with the train station.
Thank you, David, I appreciate it, and thanks for your update. You're, I'm glad you're, you're covering all things MBTA for us, so, thank you. Anyhow, any other business? We have, oh, we're all done.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Katie moves, okay? Somebody want to second? Joan, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, thanks. Okay, Mr. Manager, you have, the basketball game started at 10:00.